Mayor. Uh, thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's, uh, six oh one PM. I'll call to order, uh, the committee of the whole for this evening. I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Kosaij people. It's August nineteenth, committee of the whole, six oh one PM. Uh, looking for approval of the agenda. Uh, oh, hang on a second here. Yes, uh, Madam Corporate Officer, uh, there is an amendment to include the two thousand and seventeen spillway root flow capacity assessment as in addition to the agenda. Everybody, I believe, has, uh, a copy, hopefully, or you have it on your email. If you so choose. Do you have a copy there?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Everybody has a copy. Uh, looking for, uh, that amendment? Thank you, Counselor Kobiyashi. And we will add it as, uh, does it get added as, uh, numerically at all?
Yes, it is.
So, uh, it will just be, uh, an appendix to the current staff report regarding, uh, Lookout Lake. Okay, perfect. Uh, looking to adopt the minutes of the July second, two thousand and nineteen, committee of the whole.
Move adoption, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Logan. Uh, any amendments at all, or seeing none, moving right along. Uh, item number four, public. Sorry, we'll call the question now. Adoption of the minutes from July the second, two thousand and nineteen. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you so much. Um, item number four, public participation. Comments pertaining to a matter that has been, uh, the subject of a public hearing are prohibited where the bylaws have not been presented for adoption. The public will also be provided an opportunity to speak to each item of business on the agenda as it is introduced. So, if anyone has business for counsel, if you'd like to step forward this time, there will also be an opportunity during each item as we progress through the agenda. Seeing nothing, uh, there will also be, uh, a further opportunity at the conclusion of the meeting as well. Uh, seeing nothing, moving along. Item five, new business, five point one, Director of Finance, second quarter budget report, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, our financial officer, Director of Finance, has prepared a quarterly report for the public, and, uh, I would invite you to, uh, make any comments. Um, Mr. Payne.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. If it's the chair's will, I'll run through just a brief overview of the report and, uh, be available for questions. Does that please the chair? Thank you. Uh, so I would, uh, just mention overall, the city's on track to remain within its, uh, spending limits for, uh, twenty twenty. Uh, revenues are on track to be, uh, within, uh, reasonable variance of, of what the forecast was. There are some operating budget pressures, uh, outlined in the report. Uh, first of all, uh, unbudgeted expense for the interim CAO, um, is, uh, putting a bit of pressure on, on, on the expenditures, as well as, uh, greater-than-expected legal expenses. I had, had a look at some of the legal expenses, and I would say about seventy-five thousand dollars of the legal expenses this year are extraordinary in nature, and had we not incurred those, uh, expenditures, we would be on track to, to meet budget. Um, we'd be about, be about at fifty percent of budget. But I think some extra analysis can, can be done, um, for, uh, about the legal budget going forward. Uh, council can, um, you, uh, can decide, uh, when, uh, legal expenditures are, are necessary and, and, uh, take on additional risk or not, as, as, uh, desired. The operating budget expenditures are being managed, uh, by staff through targeted spending freezes, and, uh, there's been a few vacancies throughout the organization which frees up a bit of the expenditures. Now, some of the vacancies have, uh, most of the vacancies have been filled, in fact, and a lot of the vacancies were position, positions that had been approved in the twenty, uh, nineteen financial plan, as the hiring occurred after the financial plan was approved. Uh, one key thing of, of improvement moving forward in the financial, uh, uh, report is we intend on, on bringing forecasts, uh, into the report as well. Uh, council may recall, quarter three reports generally include forecasts for full-year expenditures and revenues, uh, so that council can get a sense of where we're going to end up at the end of the year, and if there's any decisions that need to be made at, at that, uh, that level. Typically, we haven't done that for quarter two reports, but I do see that there would be value in, in doing that, so council can make strategic decisions if necessary. So you'll see that for quarter three, and, uh, for quarter two moving forward in, in the next couple of years. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. If, if any of the members of the committee has any questions, I'm here to answer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Payne. First, uh, we'll go to the public first. Uh, Counselor Kobiyashi, if anyone has questions or comments for council, please step forward. Seeing nothing, then we'll bring it to the council table. Uh, Counselor Kobiyashi.
Uh, thank you very much, Your Honor. Um, great report again, Chris. Um, I, I do have a, a few questions on this. Uh, I'm really glad that we're going to the EAC, the Estimated Complete. I, I think that's the best way to do that, 'cause it's even hard to tell by, you know, the percentage, you know, because sometimes you, you might have, you might load up your expenses at the front end or at the, at the rear end. So, I, I'm really glad you're doing the EACs. Um, the second point I'd like to make is just, um, I, it's maybe a question to you or maybe to the CEO, but it's not very fair because you're new. But I, I just want to understand, like, who is, what the process is for, for getting approval of legal fees. Can any director pick up the phone and call up the lawyer and, and, and spend the money, or is there an approval process? Uh, so, I'll, I'll, I'll just finish my comments, and then you can answer that question, because I've, I believe the, the expense, you know, were, they are extraordinary expenses, and I understand what they're basically from this year. Um, but it still concerns me because you look at the, the total number there, and you, I look at it and I go, geez, we can hire our own lawyers here. That's how much money we're spending. So, uh, so, when you're answering that question, is that, when, whenever I have found in the past when I'm overspending, as much as we're overspending, we sometimes change the process a little bit, where it takes the CEO to approve, you know, any legal expenses or the, or the mayor. And, and that's the way it has to be, 'cause then that's the way, the way you guard it. So, and so the, uh, the last point I'd like to make in this is, uh, another question, again, uh, directed to the Director of Finance, and that's a contingency plan. Uh, lots of talk right now about potential recession, and it's real. Um, it's, it's gonna happen. I mean, it's happening in other countries right now. Um, when you see the reverse yield curve, and I watch this stuff like crazy, believe me. So, you know, I'm just wondering if we do have a contingency plan in place. Uh, there's no sense panicking at that time, so planning ahead is, is a good thing. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so just to answer some of your questions regarding, uh, the legal expense. Uh, first of all, just to put it in context, we have a risk management budget that appears in the corporate administration, um, area, and that's approximately two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That doesn't just include, uh, legal bills, just so your, uh, legal fees, just so you're aware. It also includes, uh, general liability insurance and, and other risk management activities. Uh, but to your, to your question about, uh, control over legal expenditures, um, currently, any director has the ability to pick up the phone, uh, and get legal advice on, on a file. Uh, but when there are pressures such as now, we, we get together, we work on it in, in more of a collab, collaborative fashion, which is exactly what we've done here. So we've got together and discussed, uh, what are some of the legal files that are non-discussionary, that we need to continue spending on to the end of the year, and we forecasted what the needed expenditure for those files are, and what are the files that are more discretionary in nature, and we said, let's freeze that at some point. Um, I would say, if we aren't able to, to work together, uh, in such a way with, uh, cooperation with the CFO oversight, um, there would be a need for CAO intervention, and, and that, that still might be something that, that could be considered, um, if we wanted to, uh, you know, if a council direction wanted to curl tail legal expenses or really keep a close eye on that. So, good, good, uh, questions and comments there. Uh, on the question of contingency plans, a couple of things to note there. Um, don't want to sound like a seasoned bureaucrat, but much of the city's, uh, revenue is based on property tax, which is, uh, which is a very stable, certain, uh, revenue source, mind you. A recession can impact, uh, some of the city's revenues significantly. Uh, building permit fees, uh, rezoning fees, other sorts of revenue, revenues, um, like that. Uh, the city has structured volatile, uh, revenues in such a way so that, uh, transfers to reserves can be scaled back in the case of, uh, significant downturn in those revenues. So, for instance, our, our building permit fees, they're forecasted to be high right now because we're in a, a building phase, at least in the city of Callwood. Should there be significant downturn in, in the building permit fees, we can scale back our transfer to capital reserve, uh, to do that. That's one, that's one, uh, one measure. Uh, also, council will, uh, be in receipt of our reserves, uh, reserve and funding, um, policy, uh, yeah, so, uh, currently targeted for September. And some of the, um, recommendations will come out of there will be, uh, surplus, uh, level recommendations. So, for instance, uh, what amount of surplus should we retain in a reserve in the case of, uh, needing to draw down on, on those sort of, um, funding sources? So if we lost a significant portion of our, our revenue base, we could phase the impact of that over a number of years by drawing down on surplus, so some bank accounts that we have essentially. Uh, so, the CFO, uh, working with some of my colleagues, will have some recommendations to maintaining those, those levels. I'll, I'll use, um, RCMP operating, uh, uh, reserve as an example. Um, there's no reason why that reserve, reserve needs to continue climbing, but you might want to target it to what the risk is of this, the RCMP budget going up significantly. So you want to keep a stable, uh, reserve amount so that, uh, um, if there's a significant increase, you can draw down on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Counselor.
Counselor Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, thank you, Christopher, for, for the report. It's nice to see we're, we're trending in the right direction, which is, uh, extremely positive. My question, um, this is, uh, specifically around the, the good news story about our debt i- issue, that we were, uh, just able to refinance at a, uh, at a lower, uh, interest rate. So in essence, we're saving the city, uh, seventy-eight thousand, five hundred annually, and on, on this particular issue, um, just shy of seven hundred thousand over the life of, of the issue. Uh, my question is, uh, when does some of this debt, um, end up being retired? And I, I'm looking at the Whale Road Nob Hill intersection, which is, uh, construction finished about eighteen years ago, and then, and Triangle Mountain and, and the, and the, the arena. You might not have that off, off the top of your head, but...
Uh, to the chair, um, most of the debt related to this issue, uh, retires in twenty twenty-three. I think the latest is twenty twenty-four.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Your worship.
Thank you. Um, well, Counselor Logan actually addressed one of my, my questions. So, it would be great if we could, um, at some point, just get what, what the amortization is on those five, four things, at, at some point, and, and when, when do we actually retire those debts? Uh, I would appreciate. Also, one of the things that just drew, drew my attention, you mentioned it, you brought up the RCMP. Um, and, you know, July, July of this, so like this summer, July twelfth of two, twenty nineteen, basically, the, the, we should expect the RCMP to start unionize, and, which will have a significant cost increase for us. When do, uh, are we anticipating that we're gonna start addressing that in the next fiscal year, or are we going to look at moving contingency monies over in anticipation of those additional costs?
To your worship, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. That's a, a good question. Uh, part of the forecasting that we do when we set the RCMP budget has included the expectation that labor costs will rise, uh, upon unionization. So we're starting to build, uh, a small contingency that grows year by year, so to moderate the, the tax impact as a result. Um, but we really don't know how that's gonna look, but we're, we're in constant communication with our, with our SMP liaison to, to determine that. Um, but, um, on that, uh, on that question, we will be analyzing what the appropriate RCMP operating surplus is to maintain, so that if the, uh, the labor increase e- exceeds what I've built into the budget, um, we can phase that in over a number of years.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, one of the, one of the other things, yeah, through the chair, uh, as I continue to look through the second quarter budget report, and you, you, again, you mentioned it briefly about that several of the reasons why several departments are under budget presently is because positions remained unfilled. Uh, I did a rough count as I went through, looking at the positions that were left unfilled in Q one and Q two, and that's close to, we're looking at, what I could count was sixteen. And if we, we have roughly an employer group of about eighty, uh, which would suggest that we have twenty percent of our workforce, um, that has not been hired at that, at this point, which, which suggests to me that that actually has a financial cost as well, when we, when we don't bring on the employees we expect to be bringing on. Uh, and I realize this is maybe more of an HR issue than, than anything else, but I would be curious to know, you mentioned positions have been filled, but I would like to know how many remain vacant, and how, what is our normal process on how, how many jobs do we expect that will remain vacant throughout the entire year because of role, of changeover and, and so on. So, I'm sure there's always a certain percentage that, but it seems quite high to me at the present time.
Uh, thank you, through the chair. Uh, great question, and I can answer with, uh, great confidence that, uh, the vast majority of those positions have been filled. So there was a number, yes, seven or eight, um, positions in public works that hadn't been posted until the service levels were approved in February. Those have all been filled. Um, there was the vacant IT position, that's been filled. Vacant Development Service position, which was just recently created, um, that's been filled. So, uh, to my knowledge, the only position outstanding that hasn't been filled today is the manager of engineering position, which, uh, interviews were being conducted, uh, last week.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, through the chair to our CAO and, and that. So, so what I'm hearing is that we, we have less than five employees that need to be hired. Um, and if that's realistic, that's wonderful, but I'm hoping that we can get a, you know, perhaps a quarterly update on, on just how many positions remain vacant on a, on a quarterly basis, so that council sort of has a nice idea. So, thank you.
I'm done. Thanks, Chair. Go ahead, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just thought I would answer, uh, the mayor's question regarding amortization period while I have the mic. Uh, so the, um, the Triangle Mountain drainage is the latest one to retire. That's twenty twenty-four. Um, Nob Hill, twenty twenty-two, and the, the remainder of twenty twenty-two as well. So a majority twenty twenty-two, and it looks like one is twenty twenty-four.
Sorry, and, and sorry, just through the chair, uh, just, so I just want to be clear. So you're, the Bear Mountain retires twenty twenty-two as well?
Uh, through the chair, yes.
Counselor Parkinson.
Thank you. Uh, so first, I apologize because I did have a chance for, uh, for a good discussion with the Director of Finance last week when I, when I got this and read it, but I had a chance to spend a bit more time, and on the weekend came up with a few questions. I don't think I'm duplicating any that he educated me on before. Um, but now I have another one after that last discussion. Um, the debt repayments, which I had looked at annual savings of forty-five thousand, total savings four hundred and fifty thousand. I assumed that meant there was ten years left on the debt, just doing the division, and now you're saying it's paid off in two or three years. So, some, one of those doesn't seem right to me. But maybe that's why you're the finance guy and I'm not, but...
You got me, uh, Counselor Parkinson. I, I, um, would like to just take a quick look, if you wouldn't mind, but I believe the, um, this, this year's savings is seventy-eight thousand dollars, and that's one payment out of two payments. So it would be, uh, two payments worth annually of ninety thousand dollars. Um, but if you don't mind, just give me a moment, I, I'd be able to answer that a bit better.
I mean, again, I'm just, would, they retire when they retire. I get that, so nothing's gonna change. I'm just, uh, curious there. Um, okay, just, and again, some of these may not be exactly, uh, uh, finance-related, but the one, uh, I, I, next one I flagged was the fire hall expansion in Royal Bay. Um, and I think there's some talk of that, but it's a big, big step, and I would hope that there's no sort of just tumbling down a hill to get to there, and, and we would not be looking at fire hall expansions or new fire halls without a whole bunch of analysis on, is that the right way to go or the best way to, to service the city. And I understand that there will be, um, greater bodies, whether it's the province or the fire underwriters or whatever, that, that dictate kind of what we need to do to, to get proper insurance, but, but let's be careful walking that path and not just go there because we do. Um, so I probably don't need an answer on that, that's my thing. The next one, I would like to talk about the public work service levels. And, and I did go back to look at the, uh, I think it was a February meeting when we discussed the public works, the parks levels of service. And, and I'm pretty sure that the, uh, the, the talking, uh, around the table and the belief at that time was that, uh, the city was operating at a pretty high level with, I think it was twenty-five total employees, but they weren't necessarily separated into parks and sewers and roads and what have you. And this was an attempt to try to create a tracking system to see what the level of services may be, how much time is being spent to provide the levels of service that were being provided already. Uh, not, not, I don't think there was ever any intention in that discussion to increase levels of service either in the parks or in the public work side. So, um, you know, and then we sort of saying that the full current public work service levels remain in two thousand and twenty, the labor budget will fall short by two hundred thousand, which sounds like there's more people being used, that somehow that, that this, let's try to figure out where the times going and how much is needed exercised in parks, which was supposedly to be followed up by the same in, uh, in public works, has morphed into, we need more people already. And I don't think that was certainly the thought process at the council table, and I don't, I won't swear exactly what the wording of the motion was, but, but again, that's one thing that, that, that worries me a little bit if it just kind of takes off on us. So, and, and the other counselors can, can certainly hop in on that one, uh, if, if they thought, if they think anything different than what I'm suggesting.
I think, uh, sorry, just to clarify, uh, Counselor Parkinson, uh, I do recollect some of this, and I do believe that we put it off to assess for another year. We were gonna wait for another year of statistics, uh, or analysis, uh, and that we did have significant questions on some of the
Yeah.
staffing levels at specific locations, and that we wanted some more time to, to review that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thank you. So I'm not the only one. Um, and, and this, this may be getting a little nitpicky here. Um, again, under the, uh, corporate administration funding, and it's the only one, you, you don't have the total funding and the percentage, uh, worked out. You were quite conscientious about doing it, all the other ones, and my calculations say that the corporate administration operating expenses are fifty-eight percent so far this year. Um, and then the other, uh, well, we say the, uh, engineering public works coastline erosion study, uh, no money's been spent. We're waiting a select committee, and I, I wonder if anybody here can tell me where we're at on that select committee? I know it was discussed a number of months ago. And maybe we could leave that as something for investigation. Um, capital expenditures. Capital expenditures road, you know, we're at ten percent of the budget for the year. Uh, we seem to have things like scope change proposed, uh, some of it, you say the spending quarter three, quarter four is coming, but it looks to me like it's gonna be a stretch to get, to spend that, that the capital this year, that we seem to be falling behind on that. Um, I guess, I think that's disappointing. I, I think that the city does need some, uh, some works done, and I'd like to see them, uh, them get accomplished. I know they all take time and, and they need, need attention, so, um, you know, again, the general drainage, noth-nothing work, long-term capital plan required. And then the only question that probably is answerable here is on the RCMP detachment repairs. Uh, forty-two percent of the budget has been spent. The third floor renos are complete. Does that mean that the whole, there, there's more renos to come that should spend roughly that budget? Okay. Uh, and then, capital expenditures parks, um, you've got it listed at fifty-seven percent, but it's, you know, twenty thousand out of one point two million, so I think you slipped a digit there or something, so, those are my comments.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Parkinson. Uh, any follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, so, uh, to address Counselor Parkinson's next question about select committees and everything, uh, obviously, one of the things that we've been waiting for is for our new CAO to come on board, and, uh, are, we've had a preliminary discussion, and I know we'll be meeting in the next three weeks or so, hopefully to get the entire council together in a sort of informal, uh, process to sort of begin to look at what select committees do we need to do and how, how do we move that forward. So, I anticipate that that's gonna be happening in September and October. But, truth of the matter is, it's been a, it's been delayed out because of, well, you know why, because we went through a new CAO, so...
Counselor Kobiyashi.
Uh, just through the chair, one more question. Sorry, Chris, I forgot to ask this one. On our investment income, uh, our budget is almost half a million dollars a year, and, uh, today, we're overperforming slightly. The reason why is the market's been performing, uh, extremely well. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, are, are you the person that decides which funds we have then? Number, question number one. And the second question, and I've seen you did the prudent thing, which is, um, you, you're assuming that it's not gonna be as good in the last two quarters of the year. I, I didn't, I noticed that, so, which is a smart thing. Is, is, is it like us? Can we, can we potentially lose initial capital? Um, because who makes that decision? When do you sort of say, okay, let's get out of, you know, the equity market and just go to cash, for example? It, it, it's a fundamental question that we ask on other boards right now, 'cause we're all sitting there going, oh, maybe we should be doing this. Um, I won't tell you what I do personally, but I've gone to cash, for example. Um, so, so I guess that's my question.
Through the chair, uh, yes, it's primarily, uh, primarily my decision, uh, work with the finance team to do some analysis. Um, you'd be happy to know that, the, happy or not happy to know that the municipalities are very limited in the types of securities they can invest in. They all have to be principal guaranteed. Okay? Now, principal guaranteed is a funny term, 'cause there is, uh, some very large macroeconomic events that could impact the principal, but really that includes term deposits, anything at the municipal finance authority, um, anything that cannot be converted to equity that, that is a bond of a major bank. So, we're, we're well, well protected then. We, we've taken a bit of a hedging. Um, uh, we, we've hedged our funds right now. We don't know whether term rates are going down or up, so we've locked in half our money, and we've got a high-interest savings account for the other half. So, so, um, it's pretty safe stuff.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind, I'll ask my questions one at a time, so, um, we can get the answer at the same time. So, can you just explain the, uh, overage on insurance deductibles?
Uh, through, through the chair. Uh, so we, we budget for insurance premiums, but when there's claims that, uh, exceed the deductible, we just pay the deductible. Um, so we don't, uh, carry a large, um, uh, budget for paying out insurance claims, 'cause they shouldn't be, they shouldn't happen too often, right? Um, and in this year, they, they have exceeded what, what our budget for insurance claims are, but we pay the deductible.
So that sounds like we don't carry a budget equal to the deductible.
Correct, and it can, um, the deductible amounts that you pay throughout the year can vary. Typically, we don't pay out any deductibles because, um, uh, the, the, the claims are lower. We have a ten K deductible, or, uh, we've done well and, and there's, there's no payable claims. Uh, this year, that wasn't the case. There was about two insurance claims, um, that exceeded the deductible, and so we paid the deductible for them.
Okay, thanks. And, um, the freeze on legal spending, um, I know as part of the development process, there's a lot of, uh, legal opinions needed on documents, uh, to ensure that the city's gonna get what they, uh, they want. I would, um, like to know that that process isn't gonna be delayed. Um, since then, we're holding up the development?
Yes, through the chair. Uh, yes, there's a number of development files that have been, uh, identified by staff, and we've, we've funded or we, we've expected to fund them through the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so when I say spending freeze, I just mean, um, we're not, it doesn't mean we're stopping spending on legal, it means, uh, we're stopping spending on, um, discretionary legal expenses. But, there's been some files that we've deemed to be non-discretionary.
Um, and the, in the debt list, you didn't mention sewer debt. You're treating that as something separate?
Uh, through the chair, um, it was this particular issue that renewed, and so, uh, this particular issue wasn't a sewer debt.
Oh, okay, okay, understand. Um, and then the issue that councillor Parkinson brought up about the public works employees, I think on, on, uh, councillor Parkinson's memory, the acting mayor's memory and my own memory, and councillor Parkinson's recent review of the tape, um, it would appear that the opposite of what we expected happened in regards to hiring new employees there. Um, and I, I, I hope, and I understand from a conversation with you earlier, that we will have a better process, uh, um, from this point on.
Uh, through the chair, um, yes, absolutely. So, my, my understanding of, of, uh, the service levels that were brought forward to council in February, um, that sort of set the stage for, um, hiring in the, in the, from the engineering department to the pub- public works department, that, that's what's occurred. Um, but the, the, the standards that were brought forward to council in February, they, they represented an accumulation of council direction and service levels for parks that weren't really properly funded, if I can be blunt. Um, my understanding is that council direction was sought for these service levels bit by bit incrementally through the years, and we produced the sum total of that, which is what council, uh, but there was no financial analysis to determine whether or not those service levels could be delivered within the budget. Um, and so, what we brought forward, the, the incomplete package in February, it wasn't the entire crew, we didn't, we didn't have roads or utilities. So at that point, we said, well, you know, hold up, we'll bring the whole package to you in fall, and we're not gonna adjust service levels without asking, uh, council. It, it's, it's now evident to me that performing at this level exceeds what we've historically, um, been performing at in terms of service levels. So council needs to have, uh, the, the right to determine service levels, and, uh, and we'll make sure that we empower you to do so, uh, this fall.
And, and I think when council determines service levels, that should involve, uh, seeing the cost at the same time.
Through the chair, absolutely, and, um, I, I think council needs to be able to compare and contrast the approved service levels that we can't meet with the existing budget, and what is status quo? What are the service levels that we were doing last year? Uh, and, and the honest answer is, uh, our public works department do a great job, been a, it's been a bit reactive as opposed to proactive in terms of what the services of the community that we're providing. And so, um, we don't have the greatest records to determine exactly what we're doing, what we've been doing historically, but we need to be, give council that idea as our base, and then council can decide from that base whether the, whether we need to increase service levels, decrease or, or vary them. And that will absolutely include the service impact and the financial consequences of that service impact.
Thank you. Um, in regards to the fire hall, I'd just like to back up what councillor Parkinson said, that, uh, although there, there may have been studies that were put in front of previous councils, I think before this council sees any major expenditure on that project, I think we'd like to see at least the same evidence. Thank you.
And through the chair, absolutely, thanks for the opportunity to comment on that, because this is merely a seed, just something that we need to start discussing at some point. It's not, uh, staff aren't taking this an opportunity to go and, uh, build a fire hall next year, all of a sudden it's in the budget. Um, it has to be vetted and studied and planned appropriately. Thank you. Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, maybe I can follow up on some of the questions that were previously asked, that I've since been able to figure out the answer.
You've had an epiphany.
Well, no, I've.
Checked with your staff.
I've got the Excel spreadsheet in front of me, so if I could, uh, go back to the debt service payments, and I misspoke, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, the, the Bear Mountain Arena debt retires in 2024, but the reason I said it, it retires early is because, um, the city used to get a contribution for those debt servicing payments, there was a year in which we, in which we got an extra contribution, that's gonna be applied at the very end. So really, we're, the taxpayer's not gonna have to pay the debt servicing cost in year 2024. Um, so, to councillor Parkinson's quick math, uh, the $45,000 savings for Bear Mountain Arena, that's a semi-year payment, so we have two payments worth $45,000 of savings per year, it's $90,000 of savings, uh, per year, and we have five more years of payment, so that's, so it, so it works out, but thank you for, for your keen eye there.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Payne, uh, just had one question here, the, uh, first I've heard about, uh, website update, I take it something will come before us at some point, because anytime we, uh, encourage more input and participation, uh, to a deeper level, it becomes labor-intensive. So, uh, I would love to see more nuts and bolts around that, I, I take it that'll come from Sandra at some point in time, yeah. Uh, anything from anybody else? Um, Madam Corporate Officer, do we need to move to receive this?
Yes, please.
Thank you councillor Kobayashi, uh, we don't need a seconder, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, item 5.2, this is a report from staff regarding, uh, Lookout Lake, which, uh, is a dam, uh, regarding Lookout Brook, I guess, which feeds into Lookout Lake, and then there's a dam there, and so, we have a very detailed, uh, report before us, uh, regarding several options with Lookout, with regards to the future of Lookout Lake. So first off, uh, staff, any comments at all on, uh, the report before us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to add, um, one update, in the report, it says that it's unclear, um, at this time if decommissioning the dam would be eligible for a community emergency preparedness fund grant, and we have since found out that, um, it would be eligible.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the report.
Thank you, so, uh, has this, uh, well, first off, let's start with the public, is there anyone that would like to speak to this, uh, detailed report regarding the, uh, the lake itself and the dam? Come on forward, sir, and please share your name and, name and address for us.
My, my name is, uh, Charles Maximilian, and I live at 3437 Blue Sky Place. Uh, I've looked at the report and the, and the options, and it, it's quite comprehensive, there's money to be spent structurally on the dam. Uh, what I don't see in the report is the impact that decommissioning the dam would have on wildlife. Uh, we have eagles in the area, we have various, various, uh, people that, uh, that use it as a recreation facility. Uh, I, I would love to see, uh, a report expanding potential use of that, of that lake. Uh, a question, a question I also have is, as a body of water, uh, near, near various residents, is there any impact in terms of firefighting, uh, from use of, of that lake as a, uh, for firefighting purposes? If that has an impact? So, uh, basically, the environmental, uh, impact, the potential for, for, for that lake to, to be, uh, fully utilized by, by, uh, fam- families in the area and the public, uh, are, are things that, uh, I, I would love to see expanded on.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, uh, have some comments at all, or questions?
Bowlin, Relova 3472 Blue Sky Place, I was wondering how long each of the options would take? You know, buttressing or decommissioning, would it be like a two-year project, one-year project for each of the options? It, it didn't indicate in the, in the report. And also, I want, I was wondering, um, is there a date that you're hoping to make that final decision, or are we just discussing it for now?
Go ahead, Seth.
Through the chair, um, the, the report is, is pretty rough in general for now, and just gave sort of general timelines on how long each option would take. Replacing the dam would be by far the longest, because it would have to be removed and then replaced. Um, and, and what was your second question? A decision?
A decision.
We were hoping to have a decision by, at the next council meeting, so that we can instruct our consultant to do a detailed design, which would give us, um, a better idea of the actual cost of, of whatever choice is chosen, and so we can plan for next year's budget. And at the time, um, depending on the choice, we'll be able to better estimate how long the, the, um, the remediation option would take. So some may take a long time for permits, which would not, um, affect the, um, um, residents at all, and then others would take much longer for construction to be done.
Thank you.
I think that the, uh, from my read of this report, the, the window, uh, for the grant application is the fall here, so that would sort of get the ball rolling, but for us, we'll discuss it this evening, it'll then move forward to, uh, future council session, I imagine in the next couple of weeks, and then, uh, likely it would, it would begin to flow from there. Yes, sir.
Dominique Greco, 3461 Blue Sky Place, I have just a few questions. Um, how did you come to the conclusion that this dam is dangerous? That's my first thing that I don't understand. It has been there for 50 years, now suddenly, uh, the dam is, uh, is not safe, we gotta do something. Who's the engineer that said, "The dam is not safe"?
Through the chair, um, there are residents living downstream of the dam in Langford, and, um, we did a number of studies to determine the condition of the dam, because if it did break, the water would flow in a, in a short amount of time and could possibly flood the, um, the residents and their, and their properties and possibly kill people. So, um, it's a, there's a dam safety regulation that we're required to follow, and, um, it, there's consequences, um, set depending on how many people downstream could be affected by a dam burst. So with, um, we inherited the dam from the province, and at the time, there was no design drawings to let us know exactly what the dam was made of. And we've been doing studies for the past few years to get more information on what the dam was made of and, um, what condition it's in, and to estimate that if the dam burst, if there was, uh, um, an earthquake or overtopping, what would happen. So, um, they, our consultants determined that, um, it could be possible for the dam to fail in case of a, an earthquake, and this, um, work is to bring it up to current standards to withstand that earthquake and therefore protect the people down, living downstream of the dam.
So what you're saying is, uh, scientific approved? Was it just the?
The scienti- well, they did drilling tests, they inspected the dam, they did cores into the, um, the center of the dam, and they, and they would analyze the cores.
Is it scientific approved, that if the dam burst, uh, is it gonna be consequence? Another question, i- is the people that are gonna be affected, is, is Colwood or Langford? That's another question.
In Langford.
It's Langford, so the, the mayor of Langford knows, uh, all this problem?
They're aware of the dam.
They're aware of it.
And the possible consequences if it failed.
So, we elect you to solve problem, not to create problem. So do your best, get as much money you can from the, from the federal government, from the provincial, uh, that dam, there's, that, that lake is a jewelry for us, don't destroy it, please, keep it there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Jeff Amy, 648 J Dahl Drive. Couple of years ago, I introduced an engineer to, um, our engineering department that was installing seismic monitors throughout the province at no cost, and we had a couple of meetings on it. Um, the installation was at no cost, but, um, what they asked for was, one was power to the, uh, to the installation, and the other one was, um, some kind of shelter for it. Um, it would give us some advance warning if the dam from an earthquake, uh, and we could monitor to see if the dam was gonna breach. So, I don't see any comments in the report on that, um, as to whether it would be included or not included in the remediation of the dam. So I would like to see it go ahead, um, to give us some advance warning, um, with our new alert system, I'm gonna promote that, which we share with Langford, um, we could warn people downstream, may it only be a minute or two, but it, we could be some warning that the dam is about to breach or there's a potential for it. So I'd like to see that included, that if we can still get the monitor at no cost, um, that the grant application we're putting in include the power to it and some kind of shelter or building for it to go into. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else before we bring this to the council table?
Herb Wagner, 3481 Maureen Terrace, um, yeah, we border on both Langford and Colwood, uh, along the border of, um, Lookout Lake Park. Um, I too would like to see the lake stay, it's a, it's a really nice, uh, recreation area. Uh, one question I would have is, if you choose the option of demolishing the dam and eliminating the lake, and I understand there would be some restoration to the area with, uh, shrubbery or whatever, um, is there some assurance that it will stay as a park and we won't have developers coming in and wanting to develop that lower area? So that assurance should be given by both Colwood and Langford, because I know there's a lot of movement underway to, um, eliminate septic operations and, uh, and free up those areas, and, and there are developers that would love to get their mitts on that. So I don't know if you're prepared to speak to that now, but it should, it is a consideration that you should give.
That's a good question, and, uh, I think that, uh, you'll have to allow us as council to have some discussion about this, uh, which we'll do publicly in a moment, and, uh, we'll see where that, that takes us. I've certainly never heard of, of that as an option, so.
Well, there are people going around, coming up with proposals for, they've approached our, our strata, to come up with a certain amount of money to run sewer lines and then get rid of their septic fields and put in X number of lots in their place.
Gotcha.
So that's happening all over the place. And that area, down behind our homes, uh, is, is one area that, that they could be looking at. So that's my big concern, if you eliminate the dam, it opens up that possibility, and we don't wanna see that.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you, uh, go ahead, sir.
My name is Ron Ulmer, I'm from 3468 Blue Sky Place, unlike the other two guys. Uh, one thing I'd like to mention is I really appreciate the fact that you have glasses and water in a pitcher rather than plastic bottle. The second thing is, I don't quite understand, I was given, I, I haven't read this all, because I just received it, but I was given to understand that it's gonna cost, would cost half as much to, uh, reinforce the dam as it would be to drain the dam. cost half as much to reinforce the dam as it would be to drain the dam. Because we would be getting some money from the government. Am I anywhere near right?
I think that, uh, when you look at the financial options, uh, the...
Well, I haven't, that's why I'm asking.
So I'll answer your question here off the top of my head, but, uh, the option being presented by staff to, uh, remediate or to remove are roughly the same, a million-plus dollars, and then, uh, complete replacement of the dam is roughly four and a half million is, is what I read.
And there would be any reason to totally replace the dam?
I think that's for us to discuss as council members, based on, uh, some of the technical reports before us?
Fair enough. And what you, I, I understand that there was going to be a decision made before the next meeting.
So the way this is gonna unfold, this is committee of the whole, so, uh, this is meant, uh, to be a discussion with both the public and amongst ourselves as council members. And from here, uh, it has to go to a council meeting where a formal decision is actually taken.
So we have another chance to talk on whatever the supposed, uh, final decision is?
This, this will be on a future agenda, and, uh, you'll be able to sit and listen to the discussion amongst council.
Right.
And perhaps gain some insight, uh, in, in that regard.
Another question, you were saying if the dam breaches, the houses that are all above ground and downhill are going to be flooded, possibly? I've walked down that area a number of times, and that whole dam, if it came apart, would possibly not flood anything as far as I can tell. It would wash stuff away going down the hill. There's no houses in the low spots, as far as I can tell. So has that really been looked into, or is that just somebody's guess?
Through the chair. There is a park downstream of the dam, but then the water would go across Sun Heights Drive and through the residential properties down there.
I'm not sure where that would be. But it goes down the, the septic field down the hill from the lake is pretty much like this, there's not a lot of wa, places for it to go. And I'm assuming the whole dam isn't going to go all at once, I'm guessing that you might get ten percent of it tops, breaching.
Our consultants, uh, estimate that the whole dam would breach. So you would get not just the water in the dam, but all of the material that the dam is made of.
Right.
And the water would be flowing very quickly. And it would flow right down to La Toria Road.
La Toria Road.
Right through the houses that are along the line between the dam and La Toria Road.
Well, I, I beg to differ, but, uh, I, I don't think it would be that, quite that much. Other than that, you're, you're talking about replacing the dam and possibly rebuilding it with another dam? Or, um, or do I under, or do I see that you're going to drive piles along there, put a concrete buttress, and, uh, backfill it with rock? Did I see that on here?
Through the chair, there are, um, some diagrams at the back of the report by Thurber.
Okay.
Which show sort of what it's meant by the different types of remediation options. There wouldn't be any piles.
Well, I'm all in favor of not getting rid of the creek, or the dam, or the wa, the lake. And I think we should get more water coming down the creek, and we need it for our animals, we need it for all the other stuff. So that's my take.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to step forward? This would be the last opportunity before we bring it to the table. Okay, council? Let's start with Councilor Parkinson.
Thank you. This is, this, I think, is a pretty complex and significant decision for this council. Um, probably one of the biggest ones we've faced to date and, and maybe will face. And I have a whole bunch of, uh, of concerns and, and, and questions and trepidation, I might say. I think probably like, like we've heard from the audience and, and I'm speaking with a couple of other counselors, I suspect we'd all love to keep the dam. We should try to our best to keep the dam. Uh, we have in front of us an option, uh, to buttress it for a predicted cost of 1.3 million or replace it for a cost of 4 million. You know, if we buttress it, apparently there's gonna be minor changes in the park use after repairs are completed. That's fine, I suspect, although I don't think we have really very much information on, on, on that. In my, uh, in my real life, I, I did a fair bit of engineering work, read a whole bunch of, um, geotechnical reports like this one, and frankly, this one is, there's a lot of information in there that, that I have trouble wrapping my head around, that if, 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 if I was presented one of this as a private consultant, I would probably be, uh, forced to go and hire another smart geotechnical engineer to, to help me interpret it. Uh, you know, I think, I think it's that kind of stuff. So I would like to, I think, focus on the, uh, on the buttressing option because that's the one that has hope. Uh, you know, if we're gonna tear it down, no, there's no, there's no good coming out of removing the whole dam. There's probably gonna be hard for the city to come up with 4 million dollars to build a new one. The intermediate one of soil stabilization and that, you know, may, may, maybe have to be thought of again, but if we were to, uh, as I have in my sort of review here, focus on, um, how do we buttress it and, and, and what does this report tell us about that? There is a bunch of stuff that, that, that somewhat, um, you know, that, I don't think there's really enough information to proceed to detailed design, I guess is what I'm really coming at, you know? There, the analysis developed for this preliminary assessment assumes the crest elevation is correct. That needs to be confirmed. Standard penetration SPTs carried in sonic test holes are known to produce inaccurate SPT values. Some drilling and high energy can densify the soil ahead of advance. You know, suspected bedrock was encountered at depth of approximately this. Downhole shear velocity measurements were carried out. You know, honestly, I guess I kind of probably knew what that was once, but I, I can't speak to, you know, that. You know, I don't, uh, there, there are a number, uh, there are a number of assumptions. Suspected bedrock was encountered, 11.3, but, um, could be a large boulder. Seismic analysis for one dam cross-section. The seismic assessment included selected earthquake, time history, site-specific response analysis, liquefaction triggering assessment, limit equilibrium stability analyses, and new mark deformation analysis. I mean, holy smokes, I couldn't do any one of those. I have no idea if, if that's the gold standard in, in, in mine, in, in dam assessment, or if that's, um, the information that was easy to produce. Uh, so, um, liquid, the liquefaction triggering assessment conservatively assumed an average fine contents. The downstream embankment geometry was developed based on field services by completed prior to and after 1981 dam upgrades. Based on our analysis, constructing a buttress on the downstream side of the dam alone would not result in acceptable performance as a flow slide into the reservoir could occur, resulting in an uncontrolled release of the reservoir. Therefore, both upstream and downstream buttresses are proposed. Now, I don't know if anybody challenged that or, or wondered if there were other mechanisms. I mean, there's, there's buttressing on the upstream end, um, which I, doesn't sound like there's anything we can do about it. Buttressing on, on the upstream end, one wonders, what happens if there's a little bit of a flow slide on the upstream end? I mean, things move around, does that cause a breach in the dam and therefore it is it, was the concern about water overtopping the, the dam? Uh, would raising the level of the dam do that? Another one here, prior replacement of rock fill into the reservoir, the upstream buttress. Diving inspections recommended to evaluate the composition of the lake bottom in the vicinity of the buttress. The stability analysis carried out for this conceptual assessment assumes that riprap would be placed directly on intact bedrock. So there's just a number of things in here that if we're gonna pursue this, I think we need to look at very hard before we kick off the, "Let's go." I think we need another step in this process to really get the details. I think it's been very useful to, to look at the four options and, and to, and to rank them, and as I said, to me, looking at the four options, I hope the, the buttresses, the rock fill buttresses work. But I think there are enough things that if we just charge ahead, we may get into the project and find that, well, it wasn't bedrock here, or we didn't know that information enough, well enough to really analyze it, and we may find that we have budget scope creep significant. Uh, so, and, and I guess, you know, as I said, this, this is a, this is a complex project. Uh, it, it, it worries me, I would want to make sure we were gonna do it right, even if that meant, you know, spending a little bit more pre-designed money to give us information, which may make us change our mind what we're doing here. You know, it just, it's just, it's just full of them. The feasibility of installing a granular filter on the upstream and downstream slope should be evaluated as part of the detailed design to reduce the potential for internal erosion of the, of the dam core. Probably a great thing to do, but, you know, is that included in the budget, or is that not, or where is our budget? You know, and, and, you know, I'm probably tramping on questions that you've already asked, Helen, and, and I'm sorry, but, um, I, I didn't have enough time to do this. Yeah, and, and then the other concern, or, or one concern I have is that, uh, our consultants and the city worked on a, on a matrix to sort of evaluate, to rank the, rank the options. And, and the, uh, I, I think the first option, option one, that, that came out best under their ranking scenario was to remove the dam. And option two was to build a whole new one. And, and now we're at option three, saying, "Well, let's just tweak it." And, and it seems inconsistent to me that, that if, if that was the rating criteria and the thought processes, are, are we jumping to option three prematurely? I, I don't think, I don't think that was explained, and I, I don't think what we, I guess what I, what I think we should have here is some kind of sensitivity analysis. We have this information and we have this, we have these unknowns, and they worry me, but I'm just basically a worrywart. But do we know? Do we know if, if, if they're saying we wanna bed this on bedrock and, you know, was this dam initially built on bedrock or not? I don't know. If it wasn't, what does that mean? And is that a big issue and a big-ticket item or not? So I guess my thinking is that we shouldn't be charging ahead, but we should be doing another study to try and refine this option enough to, to, to better understand the costs and the implications than we can today, and to address some of these things that are, that are thrown out as assumptions and to-dos. But I would, I would not support today saying, "This is the actual course we should be taking." I, I, I could say, "Let's focus on this one, let's, let's do some more homework on it, let's get to the bottom of it." And if we get to the bottom of it and find it doesn't work, we may have spent, I don't know, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, but that's way better than charging down into a project and finding out it's just growing on us and eating us up alive. So, you know, I'll listen to what the rest of council has to say, but, but I have, I have concerns.
Thank you, Councilor Parkinson. Uh, Councilor Kobiyashi.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I feel the same way. I, I, I'm, I'm not a civil engineer like you, I'm an aeronautical engineer, but structural. And, uh, I, I was looking for the fifth option, which was do nothing. It's an option, and, and it certainly wasn't addressed. Now, I was, I'm really glad that you, as a civil engineer, didn't understand the report, because I found that the most confusing report I've ever read. It did not make sense to me. And, and I was totally confused, and I'm, I'm, you know, I've, I've got this much intelligence, uh, but I, I couldn't figure that out for the life of me to. So I, I agree with everything you said, Councilor Parkinson. I, I wasn't willing to sit here and vote on any of these options tonight, 'cause there's just not enough information for me to feel really comfortable, because I felt the same way. I went, "Oh, yes, they say it's gonna cost, uh, you know, the..." You could see now that the pushing was the 1.3 million option, and I said, "That's gonna probably be about 5 million by the time they finish." That's my gut feel, and I could see it, 'cause there's gonna be problems. So, um, I'm just not, I just don't feel there's enough information. And then another curveball got thrown to, to us, I just was quickly scanning this report right now, and I just looked at my email, and I guess they shipped it to us this afternoon, so I didn't even get a chance to read it, but this is additional. But it looks like this has to be done regardless, one way or the other. This is how I see this, I think. We have to, um, upgrade the culvert, so that's another cost, um, that's not in the overall costing. So I'd like to see the complete picture. You know, we're, we're just gonna get, you know, you're just gonna, they're just gonna keep on hitting us here, 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 and this thing is gonna cost the taxpayers a lot of money. So I'm just, uh, throwing my support behind what you've said, Councilor Parkinson. I, I'm just not, I just think there's insufficient information here for me to feel even comfortable, um, recommending anything to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kobiyashi. Uh, Councilor Logan.
I didn't actually, uh, yeah, I hadn't put my hand up quite yet, but, uh...
Oh, I wrote you down here.
Okay, well, thank you. But I will say, and, and I certainly am not an engineer, so I would not even pretend to understand, uh, the information in the consultant's report, but I will say that, uh, this conclusion is not unexpected for those of us that, uh, have, uh, have been dealing with various reports around, uh, Lookout Lake, and when the province had assigned the water license to the city, there was the expectation, and, and I'll defer to, to staff, that, um, there are certain expectations that the city, um, and, and, uh, some works that the city must take, uh, as a result of holding that water license and mitigating the city's risk. And the city has done a fair amount of work over the years, uh, to, to mitigate the risk until we further understood what, uh, the, the composition of the dam was and what the, such as, um, uh, the spillway work, uh, vegetation cleanup, that sort of jazz that has been ongoing over the years. So this, this report is a combination of, of all the other work that, that has transpired over the years. So I, this is just a day of reckoning, that, uh, that was gonna happen regardless. I don't think doing nothing is an option, because there are expectations of the city to mitigate our risk, and we've been told that, uh, on, on a few different occasions. I, I think if, uh, and, you know, I, I have to trust the information that's, uh, that's within the engineering report, uh, and, and, um, the way I read this, if, if rock buttressing is, is sufficient, I think that's a good news story, frankly, uh, because I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Helen and Michael, that when we were discussing this years ago, we're talking multimillion dollars worth of work that needed to occur on that dam, um, which really scared us. So if we're talking about 1.3 million, uh, to do some rock buttressing, I think that's, that's great news. Removing the dam is not an option from my perspective, and, and I really appreciated the, some of the fears that, uh, that are out there that I had not heard about, uh, in terms of, uh, redeveloping that property should the, uh, should the, uh, lake be drained. From my perspective, that, that's not, not on the table whatsoever. But if we do go the rock buttressing, um, option, a couple of comments I would make is, A, we need to be, um, sensitive to, to how that's done and, and maintaining or, uh, increasing the usability of the beach area. Right now, it's, it's pretty rough. And so I, you know, I think that, uh, we need to do a little bit of work, uh, in concert with buttressing to make it, uh, more user-friendly, especially for the young, young kids, uh, that like to frequent the area. But also, uh, when we're talking about funding, I know gas tax was, uh, was thrown out there as a possible revenue source. My preference is not to use the gas tax revenue. Uh, this is a maintenance item from my perspective, um, not a new infrastructure item as the gas taxes is kind of designed, uh, for. You know, gas taxes to mitigate, uh, to, to develop infrastructure that mitigates climate change, and so sidewalks, cycling lanes, that sort of jazz, not maintaining an existing structure. So, um, that's my two cents, and, and, and I, I'm happy, uh, and I would expect that should the committee make a recommendation to council, uh, that, uh, that there's, there would be some more, uh, analysis done when the detailed design occurs, and we would probably get some more, some more answers that, to questions that have been raised. And, uh, and perhaps through you, um, Mr. Chair, to, to our engineer, is that, just to provide some clarity on that, I, I'm assuming that we would, we would do that, further analysis, or have that done when we do the, uh, have the detailed engineering work done? Would it be...
Through the chair. Do you mean additional?
Do you mean additional geotechnical testing of the existing dam?
Well, I'm, I'm assuming when we do the, go to detailed design...
Yes.
There's further, further work to confirm some of the findings within the third bor- engineering report to, to satisfy us that the work that we do is, is indeed going to be satisfactory.
Well, I believe for the buttressing option, they wouldn't be doing any more, like drilling or trying to determine the, the materials within the dam. But they, the detailed design would be placing of riprap upstream and downstream, so that it doesn't really, they think that they know enough. They would never know for sure what's under there, because we have no idea. There are organic materials, there could be tree stumps and other things within the dam. And unless you dug the whole thing up, you would never know exactly what is in the dam. But they have done rock buttressing in the past, before Callwood was incorporated, to make it more stable. And doing this riprap would make it even more stable. So it wouldn't matter as much what's in it, you're like putting something down to support it. And they do realize that if there was a one-in-five-thousand-year earthquake, it could be possible that things loosen up, and we would have to go and investigate and possibly do some repairs to bring it up to the standard necessary.
Perfect. I appreciate the clarification. And I would just say, if we have a one-in-five-thousand-year earthquake, I'm not sure we're necessarily gonna have to worry about the, the water that's flowing down there.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir. This, this resides with council right now. And there's another opportunity for the public to speak at the conclusion of the meeting. So if you wait till you're not, not, I will call for it at the conclusion of the meeting, there will be another public participation. This rests with the council table right now. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Logan. I had your worship next on the list.
Thank you. So part of the reason this is before us this evening is because we have a deadline of October 25th to apply for a grant of $750,000. This is, there is a significant amount of work that staff will need to do before October 25th. So this isn't like we can just write the application the day before. If this council chooses, well, we're in committee right now, but if council chooses to delay this process, we're basically choosing to delay out of $750,000 with the grants this year. And so I, that, that's a significant decision on my, on my part. Second of all, I, I've been a part of the emergency preparation committee for seven years, and I can guarantee you, this is something that's always been on the list. The fire, the chief, the fire chiefs of both Callwood and Langford are extremely concerned about the safety of the residents regarding this dam. And the risk to life compared to the dollars that may get spent, I think pale in comparison. I, if, if it costs us an extra $500,000, but we save somebody's life, I think it's well worth the investment. So from that standpoint, I do not believe that we can delay a decision. This decision's been delayed for a significant period of time, and we need to, to move forward on something. I have had conversations with people who live around Lookout Lake. Most of the residents have commented to me that they would be hugely disappointed if that lake disappeared. That part of the investment that they invested into their property is the, the view of the water, and they very much enjoy that. So I don't think it's, and I think there's a, there's a community good by having this lake. I, I, I really do believe that. And so I do not, like, like Councilor Logan, even consider removing the dam as an option. And so that leaves me with one of three choices. Do we replace the dam? Do we buttress the dam? Or do we lower the water levels? I'm, from a fiscal standpoint, I don't think it's reasonable to be spending close to 4.4, 4.5 million dollars to replace the dam. And so I would be supporting the buttress option. And that's what I will be voting for this evening.
Thank you. Worship, Councilor Baxter. Hit your mic, please, Mike.
Yeah, most of the reports done on the dam earlier came across my desk when I worked here, and I read them all and sat down with Helen and the engineer that had written the report and asked some questions. And in every case, I was satisfied that I understood the report. With this report, large sections of it might as well be written in ancient Greek. I have no idea what they mean. And I, I support Councilor Parkinson, whose spidey senses are going off in alarming fashion, even though he speaks quite calmly about it. And, and I, I understand exactly what is Worship the Mayor is saying. But I think there's a, a way of proceeding on both tracks at the same time, at least for a while, till we get a better idea. One thing is, I think we need to bring the engineer who wrote the report in front of council, preferably in some kind of technical decision, where we're not making any decisions, but we can do it around a table, where we ask questions about the report, and we get an expert explanation, at least from the person who wrote the report. That may satisfy all of our concerns. And I, and I consider that that would take some time. A couple of hours would be minimum. Meanwhile, staff can start working on the grant preparation, so we don't lose any time on that. If at the end of the session with the engineer that wrote the report, we still think that it's necessary to get another expert and ask him what can go wrong here. And that's always a useful thing, you know? We can all think of a list of projects locally where they should have done that. And if we have to wait one more cycle for another grant cycle, and I think right now with the, the way things are around the province, I, I can think we can rely on these types of grants lasting for a little while at least, then we'll have to wait for another cycle. But I think in the meantime, we can proceed on two tracks, and I would recommend, and this could be really hard to compose a resolution on the fly, but I would, I'd actually propose that we ask for a, either a session in committee of the whole or a special technical session with the engineer that wrote the report. And we also instruct staff to proceed with preparing the grant procedure on the basis of the buttressing option. Thank you.
So, are you moving that as an amended...
I am moving that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second or... Right. So, just a second. Marcy, can we have a reback at all? Do you have that? Or do you need any clarity? Councilor Baxter.
Slowly.
So we ask staff to set up a session with committee of the whole and the engineer that wrote this geotechnical report, so that we can ask questions and have it explained to us in detail. And also put some of the, we don't need to say that part, we'll leave that out. And that we allow at least two hours for that. Got that? Okay. And secondly, second part of the motion, that we instruct staff to proceed with preparing an application for a grant based on the buttressing option.
Marcy, are we good? Thank you. So no second or discussion? I'll start things off just for a second. I had a question for staff. Do we have the ability to apply for the grant based on the information before us now? Is there any reason not to make that application?
Mr. Chair, the grant requirements require us to submit a detailed work plan and budget alongside it. So given the current information, I would, I would think that the grant application would be incomplete, and I would not want to speculate our chances of success based on that.
Sorry, and I think...
Can I just clarify what the grant deadline is again?
It's in the report.
I think it's October 20th.
The, sorry, the...
October 20th?
October 20th. So are you saying we need to have further consultants, engineering works done on design and budgeting before that date?
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll read you from the, from the grant. And in my opinion, yes, we would need the design before applying. So detailed work plan and budget for each component identified in the application. This must include a breakdown of work activities, tasks, deliverables of products, resources, timelines, starting dates, and other considerations or comments, maps, et cetera, et cetera, studies. So I don't believe that the current state would meet that requirement. We would still apply no matter what, but I don't think that it would meet it, my, my judgment.
So the implications of the first part of my proposal would be that we would have to hire engineering consultants to do that preparation work?
Yes, my, my read on it would be, we would still need direction to start preparing the detailed design. And if we also add a direction to get a second opinion, we're gonna waste money one way or the other, either on the detailed design or the second opinion. But it might, might be worthwhile as a risk management practice, if that's how council feels.
Yeah. So obviously that proposal stands as it is, and council can alter it as they wish.
Councilor Parkinson, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. And I can support my colleague on that, on his motion. I'll, I'll be voting in favor of it. There are lots of, perhaps approaches that we could do, we could do differently. I would hope that the council could be united on really trying hard with the work we do to do well and efficiently, and not get, not get caught in some of the issues we've seen around town, where projects going vastly over budget for whatever reason. So unfortunately, we are short of time. I'm not gonna wear that as an excuse to charge ahead without doing the proper due diligence and homework to make sure we're, we're going in the right direction. Perhaps, you know, perhaps I'm off base here, and perhaps, perhaps Helen, you could enlighten us, those cost estimates, what do you think they are? Plus or minus 20%? Plus or minus? What, what's your sense, given the amount of unknowns that they reference in the report?
Through the chair, they're Class D cost estimates, which means, like supposedly plus or minus 50%. But with the current construction market, you know, we all know that the costs could vary quite a bit.
So if I would like to get to a Class B estimate, which would be what, plus or minus 15-ish percent? I don't, I don't know exactly what it would be considered. How much work do you think would be required to get to that point?
Through the chair, well, they would have to do a detailed survey of, of the dam. And, and then for the buttressing, they have a concept design. If they decide to follow that, it, it probably won't take that long, I would think. But, yeah, I'm not sure. We kind of estimated maybe a month or so of, of detailed design to get it to a point where they could do a better cost estimate for budgeting purposes.
So, I mean, there were things like they, they talked about getting divers to do an inspection, and, and I presumably they will have to before they go to, to tender, determine whether they're actually on bedrock, founding on bedrock or not. I would think that could be quite referenced. Would that be something they would be, they would be doing as part of a preliminary or concept design?
Through the chair, I must have missed the part about the divers, but I assume that would be on the upstream side. The downstream side is completely...
Be quite a ride downstream, yeah.
But, but, yeah, I, I, I don't know. I, I can't see, yeah.
Okay.
Let's start with Councilor Kobayashi.
So I just need clarification as to, I, I understand the motion. Are we, so therefore we are ergo, this is common sense, what's, we are voting on the entire 1.3 million? Because we can't make the assumption you're gonna get the grant. And then it's the 1.3 million plus or minus 50%. Am, am I understanding this right? Number one, question number one. And question number two, so we understand, we have the whole picture right now of what this is all costing us right now. Okay? Is there still this report that slipped in late this afternoon? What's that cost? So what, what is, what's that cost? So I, I'm not willing to start voting on little bits and pieces here, like I wanna see the, the big picture here. You know, we're supposed to be watching taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
Councilor Baxter, once again.
Thinking about the timeline for the work as described by the engineer, we could have this meeting with the engineer that prepared the report by the time the detailed surveys have been done. And whatever solution you decide to pursue, you're gonna need a detailed survey. So that work is not wasted. And at that point, we, we would have a better idea of what the engineer who prepared the geotechnical report can tell us about that report to, to fill in what we cannot understand. I, I think it's not a good idea financially to proceed when we're essentially blind at this moment. There's far too much information we just don't understand. And there are options that we don't know if they've been explored, options that would considerably lower the cost. And so I still think that this proposal can proceed up until the point where we've had the meeting with the, with the engineer, and the, and the detailed surveys have been done and compiled, and, and meet again to discuss. And I would like to add to that motion, and I'm gonna propose an amendment to my own motion, that it also involves costing of, of this work, because that was a, a thing that, you know, it's 1.3 million to do the buttressing, but then you have to do this. And we don't know what that is.
Sorry, Mr. CEO, you had a comment?
And I, I am prepared to be corrected by the Director of Finance, Chair Johnson. I guess from my perspective, administration is seeking committees' permission to advance this project along the line towards a decision. We're not seeking a decision today. The point of decision will include clarity on actual price, moving from a Class D estimate to a higher-level estimate as more information becomes available. It will also include clarity of budget, whether or not success on the grant was approved. The actual decision to spend comes substantially further down the road, where much more precision will be on the table for council to consider with respect to actual design, actual impacts, downstream impacts on culverts, and how we're funding it.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. So we do have a motion before us. I had a comment, and that is that I, I am personally not in favor of removing the dam under any circumstance. However, I do wonder if there's an opportunity here, and it was spoken to by Councilor Logan slightly, but I, I wonder if there's an, also an opportunity here for us as a community to leverage the constr- construction that'll be going on down there to help or to grow the recreation, recreational opportunities there, whether it's a larger beach, whether it's some accessibility issues, that kind of idea. And I know that's not part of this technical report, but I would love to see some feedback from staff along the way on if there's an opportunity to do that with the same contractor to help make some improvements to the area. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to mention that this was put on the agenda tonight, and I haven't heard much discussion about it or why it was put on the agenda, and, and there hasn't been much discussion as to why that was done.
So it was a late addition, and I think it was a previous report from 2017, and I'm quite sure none of us have had a chance to digest it yet, which is why there hasn't been any discussion. It's certainly the case for me. So however, we will have an opportunity to review that before it does come to council. So there is a motion before, do we need to reread this motion, Counselor Baxter? Yes, go ahead.
I do, I do have a point to make in following up what you just said. Counselor Kobiyashi and I have, have actually read this in detail, this report, or I have, I'm not sure if Doug has, but so as far as I'm aware, we have been discussing it. We have been discussing the fact that it does not have a cost estimate in it, and that is part of what we need to know.
So I think that what staff are trying to achieve here is just the beginnings of a dialogue. So there is a motion before us. Can we have that read back, Marcy, by chance?
I just wanted to get clarification from Michael, whether it was going to be a committee of the whole or a technical session. You said both.
Either would do. You can put a, an or in there.
Put both in.
So, that it be forwarded to a session in either committee of the whole or technical session, to have the engineer who wrote the geotechnical report to ask questions, and have staff to be held for a minimum of two hours or maximum? I don't know.
Minimum.
Minimum of two hours. And, sorry, instruct staff to proceed with preparing the application for the grant based on the, I think you meant the Rockwell buttress option, correct? And then you wanted the addition of, which I actually don't have a copy of the report with me, to get the costing for the culvert estimate to be included?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just a, a point of clarity here, the two hours thing is, is a bit awkward. If we go under two hours, have we not met our obligation? Like, I, I don't think there's any reason to include.
No, no, my intent.
That portion in, in the, the motion whatsoever. I think we can leave it at technical briefing or.
There probably isn't. My, my intent was that we, that at least that amount of time be allowed in setting up the meeting. If we all get to leave early, that's great.
Meeting, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. That a meeting be scheduled with the engineer, something like that? It's your motion, Michael? Is that good?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, all, all I'm looking for is that we get a chance to question the engineer and hear his answers.
Marcy, did you get that? Take out the two hour bit and schedule a meeting with the engineer? Go ahead, Counselor Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Honestly, I'm a bit conflicted here because, you know, I, I think the CEO described it eloquently. We're at the beginning of a process here, and, and what politicians are good at doing is delaying a process, and, and really, he, you know, I, I, I think we just need to get going on the work personally, and, and I'm satisfied with the information that was in the engineer's report, that the buttressing option is the one that needs the least amount of additional technical review because of the nature of the work. And, and from my perspective, costs aren't going to go down if we delay this. Inflation means it goes up, and we have an opportunity to, to buffer the taxpayer by applying for a grant that's here today, that may not be here next year or the year after. So I, I think it's important that, and we knew, again, we knew that this day was coming. So for me, it's not a surprise, and we have, we have a recommendation that is at the beginning of a process. Staff will be able to go out and do their work, get some detailed designs. It'll come back for, for, for the final sign-off, including funding options. And, and my fear is, you know, the 20th of, of October is literally just around the corner, and I do not want to miss that date. And, and I think regardless, if we apply for it and, and, and get the approval, I, I don't think we have anything to lose, and, and we don't only be delaying the inevitable.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Logan. Final comments, please, and then we're going to call the motion. I'll leave Counselor Parkinson was before you. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, I'm going to bite my tongue and not refute a lot of what Counselor Logan just said. But here's, here's what I'm coming around to. I think that maybe we should scrap Michael's motion and ask for staff to bring forward the preliminary design concept with much more detail than we have now, showing the impacts on the park, showing this stuff downstream with a Class B cost estimate to address the assumptions that they have in their report, whether they, whether they like them or not. And that could include as part of the work to get to preliminary design, to have the technical people come to review the work to date with council, and hopefully to review the final report with council. And, and I would, I say this because I think we're all kind of hoping the buttressing option is going to work, and we can go forward with it. We'd like to get the grant, and, and we sort of have some, maybe we can apply, and maybe it'll be good enough, maybe it won't with what we have. If we go a little further, it'll be a little better. I, I just, I got to tell you that making, making knee-jerk decisions on major costs like this because we're running out of time just doesn't sit right with me, but that's where we are today. If we go down this route, if we do the preliminary design work and get so far into it and we go, oops, it's not plus 50%, it's plus 75 or 80%, we may have decided we spent money we shouldn't have spent, but it sure beats going into construction and finding out it goes up to 75 or 85%. So I don't know, Michael, if you could support that as sort of a Michael motion plus, if you want to call it, but.
Okay, first, first thing is, there is no delay in this motion. There is no recommended motion in the report, so the argument that we should go.
There is a recommended motion.
Where is it? Oh, it's at the top.
So we do have your motion before us here, so.
Okay, so.
I'm going to call that vote here.
Okay, may, may I just speak? So, so I, I think the thing missing from this motion that I, I'd like to see in there is, and Stuart, you were, you were including that, is a session with the engineer, and the sooner we do that, the sooner we become informed, and the more confident we are of where we're going. Other, other than that, then I think that the staff comments have indicated that this motion here is exactly the same as telling them to prepare the, the grant, because they have to do that design anyway in order to prepare the grant. So that's, I, I can support all that now, given the CEO's clarifications. But I want to make sure that we have this meeting with the engineer, and I hope I'm going to get some support on that.
Okay, so hang, hang on for a sec. Let's try and clean this up. So your motion still is before us here.
Yes.
What do you want to have done with that? Are you going to withdraw it?
Vote on it.
Okay, so I'd like to call Michael's motion. Does anyone need it reread again? Marcy.
That it be requested that there'll be a session of committee of the whole to meet with the engineer who wrote the geotechnical report to ask questions, oh, without the two hours, sorry, and instruct staff to proceed with the preparation of the application for the gra, grant based on the Rockwell buttress option, and that costing be provided on the culvert.
Yep. All those in favor? Opposed? Did, and I'm opposed. Doug is opposed, so it failed. Anyone have a new solution? Go ahead, Counselor Parkinson.
The council directs staff to proceed with the preparation of a preliminary design for the Rockville buttress option and, and associated works, including downstream drainage works, for presentation to council and a Class B cost estimate, and that this work include a session with the geotechnical engineer with council to further educate council on his report.
So, in other words, it's the, the staff recommended with the addition of the downstream drainage works costing and a meeting with the engineer. Is that my?
I'm, I would only be authorizing to go as far as preliminary design, not the detailed design and technical specifications.
Marcy, how you doing over there? Go ahead, slower and enunciate.
Yes, Mrs. Spicer. That council directs staff to proceed with the preparation of a preliminary design for the Rockville buttress option to upgrade Lookout Brook Dam and associated works, including downstream drainage works, and to preparation of a Class B cost estimate for all required works, and that this preliminary design include a technical session with the geotechnical engineer and council.
He's not on the tape. He's on the tape, you got it? You got it? It's good? Everybody's good. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So I, I certainly won't be supporting this recommendation if we're not looking and giving direction to staff to actually apply for the grant. And so if, if by Counselor Luther Parkinson taking out the second paragraph, which says that council directs staff to apply for a grant for the, for the UBCM Community Emergency Preparation Fund Structural Integrations Stream for Safety Upgrades to Lookout Dam, if, if the whole reason we're here tonight was to give direction to staff to apply or not to apply for this grant, and if staff were going to apply for this grant, what was the circumstances that they were going to apply under? Were they going to apply for the buttress? Were they going to apply to have that dam removed? Were they going to apply for whatever that decision was? Then staff was going to come back and give us more detailed information. If, if this committee's choosing that we're not going to give direction to staff to apply for the grant, we might as well not even be looking at this, because the whole reason this is before this committee tonight was so that we could actually look at that $750,000 of the grant. So I certainly won't be supporting this motion this evening.
I would accept the mayor's friendly amendment.
Okay, so Counselor Parkinson, you just missed out the part about the grant, I take it, is, which is paragraph two? Does that make everybody happy? Any further discussion on that? Marcy, do you got that? One at a time. Mr. Payne, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, forgive me, non-engineer, but I don't believe that we can prepare or ask that Class B estimates be prepared without detailed design. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
I say let's ask for them. I, I think we need that. I, I think that the potential variation in cost on this is staggering, and frankly, there is no line that says this is preliminary and this is detailed design. So they can take it as far as they need to take it to get to that level of certainty with costs, because I think proceeding without it is wrong. So that's why I'm saying that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to make a comment on the motion, Counselor Parkinson's motion, and he's talking about. Counselor Parkinson's motion says that he wants, was it cost estimates for downstream upgrades? And this spillway capacity is not for downstream. The spillway route is a different route from the downstream route. So, and I'm not quite finished, and, and for this, staff did not have a chance to be able to prepare, prepare a summary for committee of the hold to review. And what has been talked about, I think, needs more staff input, because for what I read is that the culverts do not all have to be upgraded. That's, that's how I read it. And so I would suggest maybe asking for more of a review, a staff review of this report to bring to committee to review about costing, or change, possibly changing the cost estimate to any other needed improvements, not necessarily the culverts.
That's, that's probably good advice. I could say any other needed improvements. What I'm looking for, though, is at the end of the day, we have a global accurate budget for what we're going to be going forward with. So if I could, if I could make that into, what was it, any other associated improvements with the dam works, that would... Okay, thanks, Marcy.
Does anyone need clarity on Counselor Perkins, Counselor Parkinson's motion?
Want to be absolutely clear, it does include the instructions on the grant now, yes?
That was omitted by him in error, and he's corrected that. So it does include the second paragraph, which is the grant application. To put everybody at ease, I'd like to call the motion. All those in favor? And I am in favor of the motion. So that's, opposed is Counselor Logan and Mayor Martin. Good? All right, moving right along. We are now at the final public participation. For any of those that want to have, turn, come on forward, just give us your name and address, please.
Robert Clay, 3472 Blue Sky Place. My question is, I know the city of Colvert inherited this problem, right, on incorporation. Has there been any dialogue, any communication with the city of Langford? It seems to me they issued a whole bunch of building permits downwind, so to speak, of a dam that might breach. Not only do they get benefit of risk mitigation, but invariably their residents also benefit from the use of the lake that's barely skirts across the border. So that's my primary question is, is the city of Langford in any way involved in this discussion? Has it been, has the topic been broached with them? Do we know whether any sort of financial inputs will be coming from the city?
Thank you for the coin of order, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to defend Langford's reputation. Those building permits were approved by the CRD, and the subdivisions were approved by the Ministry of Transportation.
So that predates incorporation, then? Yeah, thank you. But there, it has been discussed a little bit, but is there ongoing dialogue with the city of Langford as far as any costuring opportunities?
Mr. Chair, not, not that I know of. We have not given a copy of this report to Langford yet. They are aware of the dam, and we have been working with them, telling them that we're working on studies to see what the final decision may be. But no talk of cost towards upgrading the dam at all.
Okay. Mr. Chair, but there will be. I was just going to say.
I was just going to say. Can we, can we start some? How about that? So, yes, that sounds great. Anybody else have any other comments?
Charles Maximilian at 3437 Blue Sky Place. I've noted that we haven't looked at option two during this discussion, which is ground improvement option. And what I'm seeing in this, in this report, all the options involved don't guarantee 100% effectiveness. The wording that's in here is, depending on the severity of the earthquake. And option two obviously is a million or so more than option one. And option three is a million or so more than the other option. The question I have, aside from really having a look at the impact of the decision on the environment itself and on the, I guess, quality of life of people in the area, has there been anything done in terms of looking at other areas of financial support in terms of earthquake proofing, in terms of the federal government's involvement with waterways and that sort of thing? I know there's a licensing thing involved, but it's hard for me to believe that there's only one grant out there. In fact, even for improving the area for parks purposes, for families and so on to enjoy, there may be grants for that. So, I think in addition to following the course that it seems like we're taking, it would be an idea to look at ways of improving things beyond that.
And I think that rest assured that staff will explore every opportunity to obtain whatever grants may be available to the city. Yes, sir?
Dominic Greco, 3461 Blue Sky Place. As I said before, you know, we elect you to solve a problem, but I saw a lot of confusion tonight. You know, you're doing this, we do that. I was talking about technicalities, I was talking about scientific approval because I come from Italy, and I know that Venice sinks one quarter a year. This is scientifically approved. We don't know nothing about this dam. In the last 10 years, did it move a quarter of an inch? Did it stay there for? We don't know nothing. So, that's why I insist to have some, you know, more study. And I know you understand, you want money. You want the money to create the jobs and the rest, you know, you tax the. It doesn't work like this. We got to spend our money wisely. And I'm sure that you're going to do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any final comments? Next meeting, committee of the whole meeting is going to be Tuesday, September the 3rd, 2019, at 6:00 PM. And thank you, Councilor Logan. All those in favor? And thank you, everyone, for attending.